Let's begin the meeting with a prayer followed by the pledge. Father God, we turn to you this morning. We're mindful and thankful of the season of the year, thankful for your birth as a babe in a manger, and we're thankful for being a Savior to the world. We pray for wisdom and direction today as we make decisions for our county. We pray that you would watch over those that wear badge, have a uniform on, first responders, those that keep and protect us and keep us safe. Watch over them. And bless all those families that are suffering in this Wells County with COVID. Just watch over us and add to this prayer in thy name.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We have Mike Villa-Zun. And first out in the business, we had a regular meeting, and we had two executive sessions. Entertained a motion to accept those minutes as presented unless we have corrections or alterations.
So moved.
Motion.
Again.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay. Payroll 25 for calendar year 2021 is $234,527.86. We had claims 273 totaling $1,195,036.68. Entertained a motion for the financials.
Motion to approve.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay. We'll move into Scott. We have you next. Hey, good morning.
As of this morning, there are 76 inmates in jail, 29 are pretrial Superior, 24 are pretrial Circuit, eight F6, and eight DOC. The only other thing I have as far as construction update, we're plugging away. We got all the footers are poured and done. They're taking the forms off today for the new addition part. They're hoping to be doing masonry work here in the next couple of weeks. We're pretty much all set up in our temporary intake area, so things are moving along quite smoothly on that. The last year I came before commissioners to request an ordinance for the amending of the handbook for my employees for payouts on personal days and holidays that were unused. Last year, COVID really put us behind as far as not being able to use all of our days off. We're kind of in that same boat, a mix between dealing with COVID stuff, having employees that are missing work because of COVID, working extra shifts, being shorthanded. We were down two deputies this year and several jailers. So we can do this within our current budget, but I just would need the approval of the commissioners for the amendment to the ordinance. So I asked Roy to draw an amendment for that. We did this last year. You know, being a 24/7 operation, it's very hard for that. I'd hate to see people that work extra shifts and work really hard lose those days because they were unable to use them because they volunteered to work their days off and cover shifts and those type of things. So I'm asking for you guys' vote to approve that amendment to allow me to pay out on that. I have three deputies, and then mostly, it's mostly jailers, but I have three deputies and probably about a dozen jailers that have days that they want to turn in to be paid off. And again, I can do that within my current budget, so I'm not asking for any more money to be able to do that. Obviously, I have the extra salaries being short within that to pay those out.
What's the total, do you know?
On the jail side, it's almost $13,000, and on the deputy side, it's $2,460. So...
16 grand total?
Yeah, looking at about 15 grand to pay out those days.
Counsel approved that last week also.
They...
They approved payout, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, approved the payout.
At the end of December, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So I guess it would just take you guys. And do you have a copy of that?
Any comments, Mike, on that?
I do not. I think, I think it sounds reasonable to me.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah. COVID pushed everybody and a lot of things off, so we can make that off no more than we should have.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? On favor, aye.
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
The ordinance number...
Ordinance number 2021-23.
23.
23.
Okay.
The only other thing I have is, I believe, is this your last meeting, Roy?
Yes.
Well, as the sheriff, I know you've helped me a lot over the last three years, and appreciate everything you've done and have done for this county. I know your shoes would be hard to fill. I really enjoyed working with you. I've worked with several county attorneys over the time, and it was a pleasure and a joy, and I wish you the best in whatever you call it, retirement slowing down, whatever it is, but you'll be missed. Thank you.
All right. Sean, we have you next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are just getting set up for winter months, so we have been putting the gravel roads in, in a winter condition, taking care of them. We have our salt and sand piles stocked, ready to start the season. We've been servicing our trucks, tractors, replacing tires as needed. We're, we know we can go out in full force if the wind and if the snow hits. We're going to begin brush cutting. That way, it can help us in the summer months with the line of sight and safety. And then we also identified some broken tiles and some ditch lines. I don't want to cut any roads over the winter months, but we, we have some tiles to replace and off the roads. So that's what we got going on right now.
Were you able to look at that gravel on 700 north or east, west of Marzine?
Yes, we went out and swept that and cleaned it up a little. I was going to go check it out today. I wasn't in the office, but I was going to go check it out today and see how they did.
Okay. Let me know. I'm just getting a bunch of calls about that still. I didn't get any this weekend, but usually every week I get a couple of calls about that.
Okay.
All right. Mike, do you have any questions for Sean?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. All right, Nate, we have you next.
Thank you.
Couple, couple of updates. Just a note for the Regional Sewer District Phase One. This is their Liberty Center and Morye project. District's certainly moving forward with construction. I think you've seen more of VTFs work out there in the field. They're, due to availability of pumps and some pipe and control equipment, the district is, has moved forward with an extension of their construction contract with VTF. Where work was to be done back in November, a lot of materials just aren't available for them. They're still not sure when they're going to be able to get a metering manhole for their flow, so even turning the system on is something that they can't do until they have that. So they've done a contract extension to March 31 of 2022. It gives them essentially four additional months to work on that project. We're fairly confident we'll be able to meet that, but a lot of supply chain issues are causing them problems. So we'll kind of reissue that. So I'll keep you updated as I get moving forward. And I do tend to get regular updates, or I do get updates from Alan Shaw, who's out there, and Louis Brown, who's here actually in the meeting as well. So I'll be meeting with him tomorrow, looking at their Phase Two project with them, doing a page turn of the project. So just an update on that. Bridge 99, strifing on that roadway was finally completed since our last meeting. I know that's been a bit of an issue. I'm still holding retainage on the project. That's 5% of the construction contract amount until we get final seating placed. So that's probably going to drag out into, into next year for that. I'm not planning on changing the speed limits. I think there's an advisory speed, there is a 40 mile an hour advisory speed limit into that corner. I'm planning on just keeping that for the curve, since it is still a curve. We were able to soften that, but I don't think it really warranted changing the speed limit. It probably could have been lower considering the original conditions, but for now, we're going to leave it there unless there's a real need to change that. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
I'll get my foot operational. I'll let you know.
You let me know how fast you want to drive on it when you don't have a five pound weight on that foot, so certainly. Community crossings matching grant, the next call for next year should be opening up here in January. So my plan is, is I'm going to be working on those applications after Christmas, try to get those in as soon as the next window opens. We're working with VS Engineering on a 450E section, so they were doing pavement cores on that two mile chunk from 1,000 north to 1,200 north. That's one of our full depth reclamation projects we're proposing to do, as well as I'm working on plans with Bridge 19 on County Line. So those were in my report last week. Those are the two projects. As soon as I have all the final pieces together, I'll bring a financial commitment letter to you in next month.
What is the deadline? Isn't like the last day of January?
It's probably going to be the last fit Friday in January or the first Friday in February. It's going to be one of those two days. So usually, I don't wait until the last one. I'll try to be done. I'll try to be done the week after the third Monday of January, just so I've got a little time in case there's questions with the state. So that's the plan there. County Highway Construction Standards, I had a meeting last week with Engineering Resources and Representative of Farm Bureau. There is a working draft in place right now. I just got that in a PDF format just the end of last week, so I'm going to send you the working draft. It's actually going to go to the Farm Bureau Board for comments. Once I have their comments back, they're probably going to run some things by their voting members, because there's some elements as far as areas off the side of the road, from the shoulder out to their fields, corner cuts, how they want to handle that. So I'm working with them, kind of pressing some safety issues that I think are understandable, liability issues for the farmers and the property owners that if we execute certain standards and they're unwilling to participate in, it could drag the property owners into tort claims where the county gets sued by drivers in accidents. So that's where we're trying to have some real discussions as far as what do we want to see for the properties and our use of the roadways. So I'll send that to you and make sure that attorney has that. I know with Roy, certainly, that's...
How much timeframe are you looking at the discussion taking? About two months, three months? We're not really...
Yeah, I mean, if, if everything went well, I'd say a two-month discussion period would be fine, but certainly, I think it's going to be, how do we get this out to as many of the property owners to make them aware of it?
Right, that's, that's the whole thing. I don't want to go too fast. People say, we never heard about it.
Yep. So I, if everything went perfectly, probably two months, but I'd be more than willing to sit there in three, four months, as long as it takes to kind of get the buy-in that we need. I don't want a set of standards that essentially we're, we're fighting with property owners to try to work with them and what's being done and why it's been done and why they were notified beforehand. So that's not, that's certainly not our goal. It's just, we want to try to start with something fairly simple and small, and we're not dropping, I mean, the whole document's only this big. It's not a 500-page standard manual. So it's some very simple things that I think are going to implement some safety for us for the county.
Okay.
So, so, next piece here, Wells County Bridge 106. There's actually a public hearing tonight at the Public Library, starting about 5:30. It'll be about, we've got over two hours lined up. I don't think it'll need that. This is the double arch bridge just east of Rockford on 100 North over the Rock Creek. So it's a historic select bridge, so there's some elements that have delayed that project certainly. The state has given us additional time. I just got an email about that, so that's going to be updated. There'll be notices about what the timeframe is for letting for that project as well. So if anybody's interested, they're more than welcome to be there. I will be there in attendance for the meeting to try to answer questions before and after. During the public hearing, really, it's just there for comments. So if they want questions answered, they got to do so before, before the actual hearing. The hearing is essentially to hear from the public, just to make everybody aware with that. Wabash River Study, we had a kickoff meeting with the City of Bluffton Representatives and USI last week, looking at a number of different options. I think that was very productive, looking at some scoping. Certainly, we're hoping to have some updates going into, probably going to be February before I have graphics to kind of share with every, with, with you or council. I want to bring a few more representatives into the next meeting with that. Once we've got some alternatives kind of lined up, then we're going to start trying to have the discussion of how they want to roll that out to the public with public comment. So, and that's being, since a lot of this is inside Bluffton, we're going to rely on the Bluffton Representatives on how they want to participate with that. So, but I'll keep you posted as we give a quarter along with that. Next one, utility permits. It's kind of pending. I know last, at the last meeting, I sent in my notes that DLZ was submitting permit applications for multiple areas. They are, the graphic that you have are the locations that the City of Bluffton is working with that are just outside of the city. So that's in the public right-of-way areas of the county. So I just, I haven't received the final application. My goal is to have that by your second meeting in January so we can get that approved. So they'll have that to me by then, I've been told. Next item here is just right-of-way dedications. I had one that I received. Have you received any others besides that one?
Just the one you gave me.
And this was one on 200 West. It's the section from 116 South towards the river. I think it's the last of the three parcels.
We didn't even know if we, if it was a public road or not.
Yeah, it was sort of the argument is, is this a public road or not? There are some maps that showed it with the dedication of this additional right-of-way. Really, it sets us up to do that. If we accept the right-of-way, I will turn the, these easement documents and that length to the state so that that shows up officially in our inventory so that we can get MBH money. So I'll turn that in. That won't show up until 2022 at some point.
It was our consensus that if the county's going to maintain it, we want the documentation.
We want the, we want that right-of-way to make sure that that's clear and apparent. We want to know what the limits are of that, because any of the limits actually show the waterway across the river. We're not intending on keeping a river crossing or Ford.
We think it was a Ford at one time, not a Chevy, but a Ford.
Yeah, Ford, they left it in the river, apparently. But, but yeah, so that'd be our plan, and I'll take that back to the state. And it's, we've, we've got understandings with the property owners. There's a parcel that was essentially, was landlocked without that roadway as well. So this kind of clears up any concern about any transfers in the future of that.
Also, there are utilities?
There is overhead electric that runs through there. So there was evidence that there was a roadway there beforehand. So, because I'm not aware that they had easements beyond what our right-of-way was.
But with the right-of-way, public utilities can use the county highway right-of-way?
Yes.
So for all those reasons, it's, either it's going to be a public way or not.
And there, there was no request to try to chip and seal this for that section. Their intent was to maintain this. It's just a gravel access road, so this wasn't part of the road conversion process at all.
Right. So it's either make it a public way or vacate it.
Yep, exactly. So that was the, that was the discussion, and the property, the three property owners are asking to maintain that as a roadway. So they granted that, the right-of-ways you have here. So I'm recommending approval.
Motion, not immediate motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor, aye.
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 Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Yep. And with that, again, Roy, thank you very much for your service. It has certainly been a pleasure working with you. I know I've certainly added work to your plate since I started here.
Kept me busy.
Five years ago, so I know you're, you probably have quite a bit more time in the right-of-ways and such, permit forms and the like, but it's been, it's been a pleasure. I've always known that when I send an email, I don't send it at the end of the day, because then you call me before I get home. So I have to wait till over the morning to start something, because it'll be a long night if I don't. So again, Roy...
You and Lisa are my favorites on my phone list.
Absolutely.
I'm right behind you, so.
Again, thank you. You'll be missed, but I know you won't be far away. So, thank you.
All right, very good. Next up is Andy.
No, I didn't see him.
He's in the hallway.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to request some more extended Family Medical Leave Act for an employee of mine. That person will be out of the office through January the 4th and intends to return on January the 5th. So if you could approve, I think, the employee's currently extends through December the 24th?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. And so I just need another 10 days or so.
Motion to approve. I have a motion. Do I have a second? On favor, aye.
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Three zero.
Aye. Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
After I was here the last time, and after the agenda was posted, my wife and children have received several inquiries wanting to know about my health. So please make sure it says that it's an employee.
Got you covered. Thanks, Andy. All right. I don't see Marlene, anybody from that department. I don't see. So we'll move on to Ben, and I don't see Don.
He had another meeting.
Not a problem.
So after last meeting, I was able to give you several different demo trucks that I had liked. The one I, I really liked and I was pushing for sold to Houston Fire Department on Friday. So, and, and that kind of happens with the demos. I was able to find another one that they, they printed, or they found for me. This is also a Spartan. That's through Hoosier Fire. I was able to email you guys yesterday late, because I didn't get the information until yesterday. This truck has everything that would be beneficial to us. It has some actually extras that I probably wouldn't have ordered just because of the cost, but these, they have these items on it. And this was actually less expensive than the original truck that I wanted. This truck is, comes in at $496,000. There's a couple of things that we would need to update on it or purchase on it. I would take the price to $516,000. But with that being said, Blake and I talked over the weekend, and one of some questions, because there is a holding period that we can hold this truck, so no one else can purchase it. That's a 10-day holding period. Nothing signed, no money down. It's just, it gives us 10 days. I would have them bring it here so I could physically look at the truck, make sure it fits, because it's, we have two inches of spare fitting in the station. So I physically want to see it here before we move forward. After that 10 days, there's, there's another process that we can take to hold that truck. It does not cost any money. It was just us sign a contract with an intent to purchase. That would give us time for financing, those sorts of things, and give us 90 days to hold that truck so no one else could buy it out from under us. I don't think we should, should sign that contract yet until I physically see it, but I'd certainly like 10 days to get the truck here.
Where is their headquarters, and how long would it take them to arrange it?
This truck is in Michigan right now, Charleston Township, Michigan, which is maybe three hours away, I think, I was looking at. They initially wanted me to, rightfully so, they, they didn't want to just bring a bunch of trucks in, because it does cost money to bring these trucks across the country. But if this, I mean, this is something that I think would be a perfect truck for us. I'm going to force their hands, say, no, you need to bring it here. So my goal is to have them bring it here, so I can physically look at it, put it in the station, look at the compartments, that kind of stuff. And there's, you know, four days that we would kind of be a little iffy between the 10 days that, and the 14 days until we meet again. But I think, I think that would be the best route to take personally.
Is that our only option on trucks? Is that one?
There's the only, this is the only option that I've seen that has everything that we want. HME has a truck that came in our 477. That has 1,000 gallons of water, which this is 750 gallons of water. So the compartment space is what I'm worried about, not having the compartment space. This has deeper compartments. It also has, they're called call phone compartments on top of the truck, which would give us a lot more added space. That's really what we need, is the space. The amount of equipment that's on my current rescue, moving all that over to, to something like that would, that's mainly what I'm looking for, is the space.
The current rescue doesn't have a water tank on it?
Correct, correct. Water tank or pump.
And what's the lead time if we just ordered one that fits what you need?
If, if we ordered this one, this, this one is not a stock truck, so you're right at a year on this truck. The stock truck, which is that 2114 model, which I do really like, that is 180 days. Every fire truck company is projecting a 3% to 5% increase January 1st. So the, the 2114 model, what Houston bought, is going up to $567,000 January 1st. The HME is also projecting an increase, so it'll be 550. Everything's pretty, pretty similar in the, in the price ranges that we're looking at.
Were you able to determine, and did they give you an offer at what rate, if they finance it in-house, or is my next question, Roy, how long will it take for us to determine financing and an interest rate to nail down to?
Uh, Hoosier Fire, who the dealer is, works with Republic First in Rochester. I got a text right as I was walking in. They have not gotten back. They have not heard back from them. They hope to have that today. They don't have anything, any dealings with them. It's just a company that they use that deals with municipalities quite a bit. After, it was in the paper last time, Kevin Sills from First Merchants reached out to me. I sent him the, to Lisa. They wanted to put in a quote for, for financing as well. So I can give that to you as soon as I get it.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Last time, we went through Star Financial Bank, and I thought it was quick, smooth. I mean, they're, they're specifically loaning it to a government entity for a, I mean, the interest would be tax-free to them, so. But it didn't, it didn't take long to get a quote. All we would need would be the numbers and see if there's still, I mean, it's been, I don't know how many years.
Seven years.
Yeah. But I thought that was a good experience.
So basically, what I'd like to do now is just get permission to, for that 10-day hold. It doesn't cost us anything. There's nothing signed. It's just a 10-day hold to make, so I can have a chance to actually see it before I say yes or no to that. Then we can move on from there. I can also continue to get more detailed information.
So the 10-day hold includes them actually bringing the truck to see measurements, height, and everything to fit in your compartments?
Correct.
Okay.
I see no issue with that. Get down here and take a look.
Mike, do you have any questions regarding that?
Why not just keep going?
I think that's the right, the right thing to do. There's no commitment there or anything other than they're going to hold it, so there's no problem. You should see it, see if it worked for them.
Agreed. Okay. I want to make that mention.
Yep. Motion to prove that you can get it temporarily and take a look, and then we'll move on from there.
Ready?
Second.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Three zero.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Excellent. Keep us posted.
Yep.
All right. Marlene, you just walked in in time, so perfect?
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, so far, there has been, since December 13th to December 15th, so we're kind of behind, 5,486 new cases here in Indiana, 14% positivity rate between 12-3 and 12-9, 55 deaths within, between that time also. Currently, we've had a total of 111 deaths through all of this, and we've tested over 17,000 people here in Wells County. The Omicron variant, it's expected to transmit more easily than what the other vaccines have, or the other strains have. We are having some breakthrough infections in people who are fully vaccinated. That's going to happen with any of them, and they're likely to occur with the Omicron as well. There's two strains of Omicron that has been detected so far, a BA.1 and a BA.2. There's 429 persons have been hospitalized since the beginning of COVID here for Wells County. There's been 953 ER visits, 451 ICU admissions, or 445, excuse me, ICU admissions, and 67 hospital deaths. and 67 hospital deaths. We continue to give the testing on Mondays in the morning. We're doing that this morning. And on Wednesdays, we have some limited hours on, excuse me, on Thursday. And of course, Thursday, we're closed. So we won't be doing them this week. But we'll resume to that next week, of course.
So for them to be tested, just make sure, do they have to register to come in?
Yes.
Okay.
And they don't actually come in?
I had a couple of people ask me, can I just call and make an appointment go up? And I said, I think you have to go to a portal.
Right. Yeah. And it's coronavirus.in.gov. There's been some issues with that particular portal. But yeah, you need to go in. And, but it'll not only bring us up. If we're not available, there's other testing sites that you can go to. So you can even schedule your appointment from that location. So, yep. And then here, some of them are drive-through. We are testing in the parking lot, of course. They just stay in the car and we go there and test. So we're doing that till noon today. And then, of course, that's the last time we'll be testing this week because of the holiday. We're giving vaccinations this afternoon. Again, about 70 to 75% of the vaccines that we're giving are boosters. And we will be doing that on Wednesday as well with some limited hours. After the first of the year, we're going to increase those time slots. So there's, we're about a two-week out on times as far as getting vaccines in people. So the children vaccines are ramping up a little bit. I think a lot of parents maybe have waited for the Christmas break so that they have the children at home and have a little bit freer time because the after-school hours are
Tight.
Tight. Very tight. Yeah, very tight. With all childhood immunizations. So, yeah.
And your choice of vaccines?
For the children?
For adult boosters?
Yes. We have all three vaccines available, the Johnson &amp; Johnson, Pfizer, and Moderna.
Did I hear we're orange now? We went to red and then back to orange?
Right. So we have to have that two-week status before, we're still in an advisory of red. So we have to have a two-week status of it below the 3.0 where we is at. So staying at 2.5 for two weeks and hopefully we'll go down in the numbers.
Hopefully, yes. Stay in.
Yeah.
Just not.
My fear is that we'll be back together at Christmas time like Thanksgiving and we'll peak again. But that's a fear.
We'll see what happens.
Yes. Yeah.
There you go. Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I appreciate your time on the information. Okay. Before we get to other business, we have Rod and we have Jared. And who else do we have?
Chris.
Chris.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
I will introduce Rob Regenberger from the, he is the Executive Director of the Mauna River Basin Commission and Chris Morris from National Weather Service. They would like to present some signs. These were the results of a grant a little over a year ago, but with COVID and everything, things kind of got delayed. And so here we are. And I'll turn it over to these guys.
Go ahead.
Morning. And first, let me start off by saying thank you to all of you all teaming with us, as well as the Mauna River Basin Commission in the Turnaround, Don't Drown campaign. Each year, more deaths occur due to flooding than any other thunderstorm-related hazard. Half of those are occurring with people driving vehicles into floodwaters. The second highest percentage within that category is actually people walking into the floodwaters to try to see how deep they are, to see if they can pass. Many of these deaths are preventable, as we all know. Since the launch of this campaign back in May of 2003, the Turnaround, Don't Drown campaign aims to educate motorists of the dangers of driving through flooded roads. Six inches of fast-moving water is enough to knock an adult off of their feet and for drivers to lose control of their vehicle. 12 to 24 inches, not much of a difference, will actually take a vehicle off roads. And this includes cars, trucks, SUVs. And there's also a significant erosion that can occur with this fast-moving water. Our hope is, by posting these signs, we can raise the awareness of motorists and hopefully persuade them to choose an alternate route, even if it does take a little bit longer. Because in doing so, they can protect their own lives, the lives of any passengers that may have been in the vehicle, as well as our first responders who have to go out and help save them if they get into trouble. I'll turn it over to Rod to talk a little bit more about the signs.
Again, like Chris said, thank you for the opportunity to come down here and present these to you. The partnership with the National Weather Service is absolutely important and something that we hope to continue for years to come through their efforts and their cooperation with us. We reached out to each of the county engineers, county surveyors, and EMA directors, and we asked for the top 10 highest priority high water locations. And Wells County, the location of County Road 400 East was chosen through the competitive section of the grant to receive two signs. And then through the cooperation with Chris and National Weather Service out of North Bluffster, they were able to give us 10 additional signs to distribute throughout the six county area that we cover. Now, you're probably asking, well, Rod, you're with the Mauna River Basin Commission, and you just said 400 East. Well, that's in the Wall Bash watershed. And we're going to give you two more signs for Rose Road because that was priority location number two. Again, that's in the Wall Bash River Basin, but we don't care. The important part is that we get these signs up in your highest priority locations, and hopefully we can, we can save a life.
Right. Safety matters.
Safety matters. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. So fantastic. Thanks.
Hey, Jared, turn that sign around. Let me see it.
Where the clock is.
Yeah. Reverse. Perfect.
Can you read backwards?
Yeah. I got it.
Excellent.
Stand on this side.
Do you want to just take pictures of these guys?
Do you really want to send it?
You can just stand up. I bet we can stand out front of it. You've got a busted foot. So why don't you make your move?
I'm scooting.
That's why Mike wasn't here.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. All right. All these other things are under other business?
I have interlocal engineering services listed, but I don't think there's anything updated in that. Is there, Roy?
I think we got a test document or something.
Sorry.
We got like a test document or a proof or?
The last, when I got the packet you sent to the commissioners, I made my own packet and added the stuff that you didn't add.
Thank you.
I didn't send it out. The last communication I had was, I had two communications from the city. One was the city attorney saying, well, can you even do this?
We've been working on it for
Why do you bring this up now? But, but there's a good reason for it because the statute says the county engineer can't enter into an engineering contract with any other entity. But it says the executive can direct that he provide highway engineering services to a municipality. So the issue was, well, are the services that the county's, that the city's looking for highway engineering services? And like, okay. So I said, well, when in doubt, go to the local, local rule. And I said, local rule statute says you can do it unless it's specifically prohibited. So the statute said the county executive can direct the highway engineer to offer highway services, but it doesn't say you can't authorize him to perform engineering services to the city. So that, that was my response. I haven't heard back from him. But the other, the other thing that causes me more concern is, you know, the county and the city have the same insurance advisors, not necessarily same companies, but it's same people. And so I got an endorsement from the city's carrier. And they highlighted the endorsement. I'm concerned about the endorsement in terms of, does it really even cover anything? But, so anyways, that's where we are. I don't have anything ready to sign. I'm waiting for the city to respond to the last proposal that had indemnification. I mean, it's, it's fine to add, add that county, the county highway engineer is an additional insured. But if it doesn't cover anything, then I don't know that I'm real comfortable with that. But anyways, so I guess we're waiting on the city to say, do you want it or not? And, and work out indemnification regardless of whether the additional insured adds any comfort to us. I hope that makes sense. Does that make sense to you?
I think so.
Yes. Does that have to revisit it? Next meeting or next meeting?
Exactly. Just more work?
Well, you know, if, if the city's carrier endorsement adding, adding you as additional insured doesn't help, we should still start with our own carrier saying, is the county covered if we authorize engineering services to the city?
Correct. I would like to be under some sort of insurance.
Right. Exactly.
That's right.
Let's do it right, however long it takes.
So anyways, that's where we are on the interlocal agreement for engineering services.
Okay. All right.
Now, interlocal agreement for emergency communications.
Yes. I didn't have anything on that.
I have, I drafted an interlocal agreement. And the commissioners reviewed it and commissioners came back and said, well, I don't think we need all these different committees. Let's make the 911 Advisory Committee the Advisory Committee for the Emergency Communication. And then a question was, well, what about the costs? What costs are there to be shared? And what do we presently spend now? The issue with the emergency communications is the money is coming to the county from the state. And then the state pays, I think, I asked Lisa, well, what do you spend it on? And she said, well, seminars, things like that, but also reimbursement to the city because the city has the only PSAP. And, and I don't see the county wanting to create another PSAP with all that administrative cost. So anyways, I sent the draft. I did get a response from Kyle Randall. And he said, well, there were some issues that he wanted to discuss or the city wanted to discuss, but they, the city's not gotten back to me on my draft there. So that's where we are. I think Blake had some questions about costs and
Yeah. It's related to what we currently pay and we share with the city of Bluffton. And if we're going to merge it into one unit, their share and our share, where's it all coming together?
I've had a discussion with at least one member of the advisory board who said, you know, there are considerations that favor this other than reducing costs. I mean, even if we have some costs, the end result will be a better system that functions better. And it may, you know, we couldn't say, well, we're going to eliminate two positions or whatever
Right.
at the sheriff's office, but we're going to be able to maybe avoid employing more people if we have this combined emergency communications system.
Yeah. Let's get the details.
So, so costs, costs are a consideration.
One of many.
It may be beneficial beyond any reduction of costs. And, and one thing that the police chief did send me, he sent me their salary figures. And I think I forwarded that on to you too. So that's where we are on that. Supposedly, the city has some issues that they wanted to address, but I've not heard from them yet.
Okay.
Next thing is opioid settlement registration. This is a class action, and we had communication from them a couple of years ago, which is there's a class action suit. If you want out, you need to do something. So the county did nothing. We didn't hire anybody to pursue it. We just did nothing. So we're still in the class. We got a communication last month that, that there is a settlement pending and that there's a need for the county to register. And I think a deadline on that's January 1. So my point in bringing it up is that when, when the commissioners decide on employing a new county attorney, it might be, need to do it sooner than later because you've got that deadline.
Yeah, we ought to get that done, in my opinion. So is that resolution ready to go? Or agreement or?
No, it's, it's just a, it's an onsite place where you sign up.
Gotcha.
Where you register somebody. For Wells County, this is our registered representative on the opioids settlement.
Do we need to give you permission to do that on our behalf or?
Well, my thought was it ought to be my replacement rather than me sign and then
As long as we don't have a deadline weakness, I think we'll be okay.
Well, we got a deadline at the end of this year.
Right. So we need somebody onboard.
Roy, can't you, Roy, can't you sign that? And then we can transfer to somebody else afterwards? So we can meet this deadline or no?
That's, that's a possibility. But then they're going to be sending all this stuff to me. And if you replace somebody before the end of the year, they can, they can, I mean, they can register and then you won't have that issue.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that either way. If we're ready to, to vote on the replacement.
Yeah. Well, we haven't got to that point yet. So.
I mean, today. So if we are at that point.
Let's do the, the last three and then come back to the board appointments if that's okay. Tax sale, unsold property.
Okay. Compters here.
One property or more?
How many didn't sell?
It's just that one.
Okay.
We had a property that's been on our tax sale for probably like 10 years. It's a property because it's a, it's a garage. It's kind of attached to a breezeway to a house.
Exactly. I've been here. I've seen it.
We, we talked about this last year. And last year, we decided, okay, this, no one's ever going to pay the delinquent taxes. Since it didn't sell, the commissioners can get a tax sale certificate. So we did that. And then we advertised for a sale of the tax sale certificates. And, and the guy that we thought would be the likely purchaser didn't show. So it's like, what the hey? So my thought on it this time was, it didn't sell again this year. Kathy said that the, the balance on the property was $8,763.21.
And now it's higher.
I, I think you, I think we ought to move on it, but
It's over $9,000 now.
My idea of moving on it is, is not to get to tax, well, is not to have a tax sale certificate auction, but go ahead, get the tax sale certificate, and then do what we need to do for the county to end up with a tax sale deed. And then the county can own it and then decide what we need to do to sell it. We've sold, with, with the county farm, we, we know what we need to do to sell property. My thought is it, it might be a little less onerous because the likely sale price would be less than. I mean, like the county council would have to approve any sale of county property in excess of $50,000. I don't see this bringing $50,000. So, you know. I don't see this bringing $50,000, so, you know, we might have to publish notice, but it might be easier to deal with it if the county owned it rather than just have a tax sale certificate.
I think we need to get it into our hands so we can dispose of it at our...
Yeah, checking on the G.I...
If nobody's bought it in this many years, it's not going to happen.
Checking on the G.I., and the G.I.S. website, it's shown as two parcels but one tax number. But if you look at it, you know, there's the residence and then attached garage, so my thought is that...
Lylee and...
Does the homeowner use it now? Use the garage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Baffles me. Let's get it in our hands and what we need to do.
In my opinion, doesn't have adverse possession because he had to pay tax on it, and it's been a separate parcel for tax purposes. And historically, they haven't paid that much attention to the requirement of paying taxes, but in the last six years, the Indiana Supreme Court has said, we mean it, you know? And so when, there's just no way he can satisfy that requirement of paying taxes. Now, the owner doesn't reside there, it's a rental property, but to me, it should be worth some money.
So what do you need for a motion on that to get it going?
Maybe a motion for the county to proceed to obtain a tax sale certificate and obtain the property through the tax sale statute. I mean, we need to give notice to the record owner, which is long gone. I mean, it's got a long history that it was owned by a common owner, but they got it in two different deeds, and the mortgage company, when they got the mortgage, they didn't list both properties. So when they had a foreclosure and a sale, it didn't include these two lots. So that's why it's still in that common owner from a long time ago. But that's my recommendation, rather than try another tax sale certificate sale. Let's get the property so we can ultimately deal with it one way or the other.
So make a motion to get the certificate and obtain the property for the county so that we can move forward with selling the property.
Does that make sense? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
I don't have anything on the county highway garage.
I can basically say we had interviews this week, and hopefully we'll be moving forward.
I think there was a recommendation to the commissioners if they wanted to make a selection today of their design firm or not, or if you want...
I haven't had a contact with Mike in that regard.
I didn't think that piece had to go through the commissioners. It just had to be, is that right, Roy, to get the architectural firm and...
Do we have to bring that to the commissioners?
I would think that the committee should make a recommendation of commissioners and the commissioners pass on that recommendation.
So will we have to do that on every subcontract also?
The contracts, as long as the contracts are through the commissioners, it needs to be a commissioner actual people, is my understanding. So the committee was only just going through the motions. That way the commissioners didn't have to do all of that, obviously.
If it's a recommendation with respect to employing an architect, is that what the recommendation is?
Well, Thornburg just told me, once we got the project approved and we picked the CM, everything underneath the CM didn't have to go through the commissioners. I'm all right either way.
No, that's okay. And their counsel for the project, if Barnes and Thornburg are saying you don't have to, then you don't have to.
It's going to be a long process of every two weeks, we've got to come through and say, the snit guy, the bricker, so that's why I ask.
All of the subs, like in the construction, that's exactly right. That'll all be through Jackson. This one, the design firm, is outside of that agreement.
Not according to Barnes and Thornburg, but we can approve it. Let's approve it today, just to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is, but...
We had everybody notified or?
Everyone who was not interviewed has been notified. The two that were interviewed, no notifications have gone out to them. So they're anticipating a notification this week as far as who's selecting, in a way they can get started on preparing the AIA contract between the county and them.
So it's down to LVOTIS and PCI?
Correct.
So I'd make a motion based off the committee's recommendation to employ PCI as our architect for the county garage.
Mike, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay.
Third second, then.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
And the county farm, closings are scheduled for today. The sale of the, I'm going to call it, well, Track 3, the building lot, that is a minor subdivision that was approved last week, but since that's an exception on Track 2, the sale to Muncie Farms, it has to be recorded. So just to make sure there is, if there's any glitch with closing of Track 3, I have a new deed. Talked with area plan, and they said, well, what you could do is the commissioners' deed to the commissioners that tracked, so they can stamp it, so it would be a lot of record, and it doesn't do any harm. If we do close today on Track 3, it's just the same description. It's already been approved. So I have a new deed from the commissioners to the commissioners, so I can get that stamped, and that would be a lot of record, and then we can close. In connection with the closings, I think I forwarded to you all the settlement statements. I've reviewed the settlement statements, and I have from the title company the closing documents. Some require just one signature, and they prepared it for the commissioner president to sign, so I would suggest a motion to approve the documents and authorize the commissioner president to sign the closing statements. You have already signed at the last meeting warranty deeds to the purchasers for those three lots. So it's just a matter of authorizing the signature of the closing documents, and in that regard also for the commissioners to sign the, what do I call it, the closing arrangement, closing agreement with respect to title issue. So would like to have those documents signed by the commissioners this morning.
It's a motion to approve, as per Roy's description, the new deed for Plot 3, and to sign the closing documents to close the sale of the farm.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
All right. All right. Board appointments for the commissioners, some are annual, some are multi-year. So...
And the ones that are highlighted on your sheet are the ones that either I don't have any paperwork to be reappointed, or they don't want to be reappointed for next year. We have three applications for the Health Department Board and two for Beth Singleton's spot on the Property Tax Board of Appeals.
So Roy, I have a question about the Health Department. There's three applicants. One is LA Brown, and he resides as part of the RSD. Can he serve on two boards?
Well, that's why I sent an email saying I don't have an answer yet, but because he's also the, what's his title, superintendent of the RSD, my concern is whether or not that's a dual office. And no disrespect to LA Brown, it's just something that needs to be checked out. That came up recently when a township trustee was interested in, what was it, the solid waste?
Correct.
Position. And initially, I didn't think that was a problem, but then when you get into it, I mean, if you look at the Attorney General's guide on dual office, it's like, who knew? They said that the county highway superintendent was a lucrative office, which kind of surprised me, but then when I got into it, the case that they cited was in, I don't know, like a 1906 case, and apparently at that time, the county highway superintendent was, or it could have even been a township highway superintendent, was an elective office. So I haven't had, because I've had other things on my plate, enough time to look at that, but that's, I'm just saying, it ought to be, it ought to be checked out. And it's probably more to see, looking at the RSD statute, whether that superintendent position is a statutory provision or if it's, or if it's not. If it's, if it's, if it's an employee relationship, then I don't see a conflict. But if somehow that's deemed to be an office, and from what I've read, lucrative just means do you get paid for it? So it doesn't take much to be lucrative. So I'm saying, I don't have an answer, but I think that should be checked out.
Why don't we make that particular one decision in January at our meeting? Would that be, would you be okay with that? Mike, if we move the Health Department appointee till first meeting of January?
For the, you broke up, I heard from hearing you for that last part there, it's for the PETA BOA, correct?
No, strictly for the Health Board position right now. We'll wait till the January meeting, just to determine if LA is eligible.
The question, yeah, the question is whether LA is available or eligible to have, be considered for that job.
If we, if we need to wait, if you guys are in agreement, wait on that, I mean, I'm okay to get an answer on that, but I know that, you know, Roy's not going to be the one giving us answers at that point. Is that correct?
I think it should be my replacement, but then that depends on when you replace me.
Right.
If you don't decide to replace me until January, then that's going to delay...
Another meeting, so then we're, you know, yeah, three weeks.
Yeah, I think we can get an answer back probably this week, don't you think? Or with Christmas, maybe right afterward.
Well, besides the closing, I've got a telephonic hearing Wednesday on a workers...
Gotcha.
On unemployment appeal.
Okay. If it can't happen, it can't happen. We'll do it next week.
If it is going to cause a problem, I can withdraw, no problem.
Well, I think you offer some expertise that would be invaluable. It's not, that's not the question. The question is, is it permissible?
Right.
I think we ought to investigate it. So with this, that one particular health, we'll wait. So the current, other than Roy, we currently have Mike at Miller as our director at 911. We have Dewey Randall at the Veterans Office. We have Roger Richardson, our IT director. Sean Bonar, our supervisor, our engineering and ADA coordinators, Nate, EMA directors, Rick Velazquez, and our courthouse custodian. I would entertain a motion regarding those as one motion to retain.
I'll make that motion to retain Mike Miller, Drew Randall, Roger Richardson, Sean Bonar, Nate Rumschlag, Rick Velazquez, and Bobby Studebaker.
Third second, then.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three, motion carries three, zero.
Okay. So let's, I'm just looking off the list here, so we've got, just let's just go one at a time. Alcohol, beverage, and commissioner. Nancy Klein was put in in June, and she wishes to be reappointed.
So moved.
I have a motion to...
Right.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero for Genesee Klein.
Okay. We have two positions at the area plan commission, both willing to serve again, Tim Rohr, Tyson Brooks. I entertain a motion for those.
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second? For Tyson Brooks and Tim Rohr, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three, zero, motion carries for area plan commission, Tim Rohr, Tyson Brooks.
Okay, we'll go to the cemetery board, Jerry Lehman, wishes to be serving again. That is for a five-year term.
Yeah, a motion to approve Jerry.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero for Jerry Lehman.
Okay, I'm going to skip one and move to the community correction. And we have Kerry Adams and Mary Perata, both willing to serve again. Those are four-year terms.
Motion to approve the two for county corrections.
Right.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Right.
Three, zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries for community corrections advisory board members Kerry and Mary.
Okay. And I'm going to want the bottom six. And that would, that was the bottom five, Rock Creek Conservator District, Jeff Prible, three on the sick bank committee, Laura Darripel, Marlene Hoag, and Diana Collins, and the Wabash River Heritage Quarter Commission, served by Doug Sunling, who's willing to be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint Jeff Prible, Laura Darripel, Marlene Hoag, Diane Collins, and Doug Sunling.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
There's also a resolution for Doug Sunling that the Wabash River Heritage Quarter Commission likes to have signed as well, and that would be Resolution Number 202127.
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
Property Tax Board of Appeals, we have two individuals needed. We have Larry McChesney, willing to serve again, and Beth Singleton has asked not to. We have two, make sure I don't miss anybody, two individuals that have expressed interest to serve in this position. Chandler Gerber, Bluffton resident, and Brandon Hardish, also a Bluffton resident. Both are in the audience, so you want them to come before us and speak anything or?
I think there's a question first, is you read through those regulations for the PETA BOA, it says that you're supposed to be a resident of the county. One should be a level two and a level three appraiser. So I think there are still some questions for me that I'd like to talk to Kelly about, about how that selection's made and who's currently on there.
Okay.
Before we choose what to do there.
Okay. Mike, did you have any questions, comments regarding the two applicants?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Stringer. I think I need a week to digest this a little bit and collect all my facts before I make a solid decision on this.
Okay. Bring these back at our first meeting in January on those applications, but I will need a motion then to approve Larry. need a motion then to approve Larry, since he's willing, unless you want to do both of them together.
Blake, and Jeff, I do have a question on that point, based on the document from the Berry Wood, Department of Local Government of Finance, on a three-member Pita Boa, as I understood the document, it appeared to require that at least two members of the Pita Boa reside in the county. And I would ask the Council, before making a ruling on Larry, make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, make sure that he lives in the county, because if he doesn't, both Chandler and I do. So I just want to make sure that everything is squared away on that rule. And then the other rule would be, you have two applicants, you have two existing Pita Boa Board Members, it is an option to create a five-member Pita Boa, in which case we could just find a fifth member. So there is some flexibility here, there's some questions out there.
Yeah, I agree that we need to get some more information. I don't know that I support a five-member Pita Boa, but let's figure out what's going on with these.
Yeah, let's get that information, that's necessary, if we can discuss it the first meeting, if we don't discuss it and make a decision, then make it at the second one, so.
Sounds good.
You all right with that, Mike?
Mike, you okay with that?
Thank you.
I agree with that, yes.
Okay. This is, we had a glitch in the runtime, thank you. So that one's going to be paused. Currently, the Health Board, I think we've agreed that that's going to wait. EMS Board, currently, I serve on that, that was done by Kevin Woodward for multiple years because at one time he was the President, and due to the fact that he was my proxy because he had the experience, and since he's left, I took that position. And then I think my statute even says the Commissioner President needs to be part of that or else he gets to be a proxy, so I'm willing to continue serving in that capacity. Glad for your support, Jeff, and also Mike.
Are we, we still have our review of the, of this committee next meeting, correct? Or we vote on President, Vice President?
Yes, at the next meeting.
Yeah, I back that for now.
There's a motion for supporting me to stay on the EMS Board.
Second that.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
The last two positions that I currently serve on and have, but don't need to, Economic Development Board, and also the Chamber of Commerce, those two.
Are those typically the President, too, though, right?
They have been, I just remember, since I've been a Commissioner, my, my eighth year, as, no, seventh year as President, two years as a Member, Scott Mossberg was prior to me, and I was just asked that I would come to some meetings. And I, Council, Council, or the Chamber, I've missed two meetings in the nine years, and I think in the Economic Development, one or two. So I would like to continue serving, but, you know, if it were me, if I could serve this coming year and step away, that you guys get your feet grounded and move forward in 2023, I'd be glad to step down and let somebody step up, if that would be okay with you guys, it's totally your call.
What do you think with those, Mike? Do you want to put those on the next meeting also and let's think about those, I didn't even think about those this week?
Yeah, let's wait till the next meeting when I get back, if that's okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
We still have the Huntington Library.
Right, the Huntington Library, you have hered, but doesn't mean she doesn't want it.
Correct.
Because if I recall, she took over like in the last year and a half or something, possibly two years.
Yeah, she took mid-year in 19.
April 1 of 19?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just remember, I think this was the third one since I've been a Commissioner, people rotating in and out over there, so, because it's made by them and then they ask us as Commissioners in Wells County to support their candidate.
And Huntington doesn't have a Commissioner Administrator right now, so I'm having a little trouble. So we'll, we'll do it whenever.
Can we hire a Commissioner Administrator?
You can't.
So we'll move that to the next one, too?
Yeah, hopefully we'll have a response back from Huntington County on that position. We have not had a conversation, so everything I say is public, Mike, so I'm just going to ask if you want to make a decision at our January meeting, if you want to have a special executive meeting to discuss Roy's replacement, I'm winging it here, so I haven't had or asked for feedback direction, so I want you guys to have input in this, because...
I've reviewed the applicants, I think it's essential we have another appointment by our next meeting, I don't know that we need to have an executive session, I mean, I'm ready to vote when, when, you know, you guys are, I feel good.
Yeah, I'm the same, I've looked at them all and made a decision who I'd support.
Okay. You want to make that in a motion?
Yeah, a motion that we, or make a motion that we point Colin Andrews to take the position of Roy going forward, gives us some continuity there between Roy and Colin, and too, so...
Okay.
I would second that.
I was going to say, I hope that's your backing, so appreciate that, and three zero?
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, Colin Andrews.
Colin, you got your homework between now and next meeting, so get on it.
Yeah, I'm going to cancel Christmas this year.
A lot of stuff in the pipeline, so...
With, with, will Colin also be serving as the county's Title VI Coordinator?
You have in the past, does...
I think that's only fair.
That's only important for my grant applications, I have to have that person identified.
The good, the bad and the ugly.
I didn't know if that was a qualification he needs to apply for and get credentials or whatever, so...
So we'll need to redo that plan.
Yes, so you'll have to update your Title VI plan with your, with the new appointments, and then I need to make sure that any applications I have, have that changed signature line, so that's why I'm asking, because that'll be part of our Community Corrections application next month, so...
Yeah, Blake, just for everybody that put in for those applications, we're really not pushing them off, we want to make sure we make the right decisions and give everybody, including LA, some time to make sure whether he can serve or not serve, so it's not a delay tactic by any means, we just need to, you get one choice, one chance to make the right decision, right? So I just want to make sure I got all my...
Mine's all I want to do, it's right, so...
Everybody knows that.
Okay. Lisa, what else?
Can we sign, can we put Colin on the opioid issue then now, or do we need to wait?
Yeah, that way we get that one closed out.
I'm fine with him registering.
Great. Other than that, we can take, we can take that off then.
We'll make, go back and rephrase that motion or whatever it was, that we can include that since we made this...
So make a, make a motion for Colin to register us in the opioid suit or whatever it is.
Okay, so I had a motion, you could, second, on favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
I don't have anything else, I just want to say that Roy is one of my favorites and not just in my phone. And I will miss him terribly, I will miss his knowledge, his wit, his, just everything, his...
We have a spittoon club.
Yes, we do.
He made her smile last meeting, we won't say why, but he made her smile last meeting.
Definitely.
Roy, I appreciate how you helped me also, so thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you.
You'll be missed.
I really appreciate the years we had, I think we started together, so...
We did.
Yeah, it's been invaluable, things you've learned along the way that benefit you and some of the stuff you carried as me, as a developer, some things I had, and how we could partner together, and like I said, he was on top of everything, like if you didn't have an answer within an hour or two, that was a problem and he didn't get it or whatever, but I really appreciate it.
Well, I was laughing because, you know, Lisa's so nice, like, oh, I'm so mad I could just spit.
Yes, that is true.
So I got her a spittoon.
And at the same time, I got him one, so we were trading spittoons all at the same time.
All right. Jessica? Dave? Audience? Light open.
Mostly for my benefit, but I'm ending my seventh year on County Council this year. Could you give a public statement, update timeline on County Highway Garage? Please.
Nate is our go-to construction guy, since PCI has been entered into the fray now, we kind of basically have a time slot of what's to transpire if it stays on that same continuum, so...
So with PCI selection, I need to send out the AIA contract so that they can enter into an agreement with the county. At all likelihood, PCI will probably start some work even in advance of getting that signed contract. Once that's signed and backed, I can bring that back for the Commissioner approval, it's my understanding that sometime mid to late summer, we should have documents out for bid. Some of the discussions with PCI during the agreement is that we may fracture some of the contract up so they can fast-track certain phases, like some dirt work, earth work on it. And in all likelihood, depending on closing on bonds and the like, we should certainly have bids before the end of this year, probably in the fall of this year, and try to be under construction.
So you're, you're, you're telling me today, we might turn dirt in 2022?
We sure better.
Yeah, we better, I mean with...
There's no good excuse for why we wouldn't be turning dirt next year.
Chuck, we have a, we have a tentative Gantt chart as part of their proposal, we'll give you that whole package so you can see the timeline of when bids go out.
We've got to design the building, get the layout, and basically, we need to get the shale because right now steel for a building roughly eight to 12 months out, just depending what size and shape design, roof pitch, we pick, so once we have that, we can get that into queue, and then it's all the other stuff, like he said, certain things need to be done by certain dates.
That's a good point.
Then we are still following within the parameters of our agreement with Commissioner Mossburg?
Well, we've got 18 months before we have to surrender possession. I did happen to see Mike and Shelley last week, and, you know, all he was saying was he was glad to see progress going, he knew that the county farm had sold and we're closing that today, so...
He indicated to me that as long as we're moving forward and actually getting things done, he'll work with us, but I'm with you, Chuck, that that's what I do for a living is develop.
I mean, it's been way too long. Way too long.
Yeah. It's moving now.
Can you survive another year?
I'm going to do my best. I don't know what other choice, what other choice there is.
Well, the other thing is Sean came aboard, right, as we're making some of our intermediate decisions, and now we, this, so we need his input to say, is what we picked and chose the right thing, or do you need to modify anything? So that's going to happen here probably in the next 30 days.
So we won't have a road extension off of Adams, we'll put a stub out there to enter into the new building when we run the suing?
The property would front to 200 South.
200.
Yeah, so we're in the west half of that parcel, so we'll end up connecting it two south, not at Adams Street, or the Adams Street local tracks extension.
I mean, a building corporation has been formed, we do have a tentative lease, so we're proceeding along that, it's just, I think the next thing would be the financial decision, once you've designed the building and figure out the costs and see what resources we have that can be applied to that, and then what difference, but from, from the documents, it looks like the financing was a lease purchase similar to the present, I mean, the old jail, that was a lease purchase where the building corporation would own the land, and then when the debt was retired, then building corporation needs to convey that back to the county, hopefully we'll remember to do it this time, but, you know, the building corporation will do that rather than be administratively dissolved and try to track them down to get a deed signed, but...
Chuck, what if we got a slot on your agenda once a month, just to give an update to the County Council?
Well, yeah, that, that really is, there's just no, no feedback coming from the committee that's been put together in my eyes, and it's just frustrating on my part, I can't, can't imagine what the employees are feeling like, and maybe they get up and hit more than I do, but, yeah, it's just extremely frustrating, and I notice it for you guys, too, and I notice it to Nate, but it's been way too long. We've built a lot of stuff in much shorter time than doing rehabilitation on facilities already, and started way after we planned on County Highway reelection.
I agree.
Your President's on our committee, too, though, so...
He is, I know.
Yeah, and he's attended all the meetings, so he, he's, so, appreciate you bringing that up. Anybody else in the audience? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, adjourn.
I'll second.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero?
Aye.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, Mike, appreciate it.